Okay, I'll call the meeting to order. Welcome everyone to our Williamsport City Council meeting. It's Thursday, August 8th. We're in Trade and Transit 2. Please rise for the invocation by Councilman Byder, followed by the flag salute.
Lord, we pray for wisdom. May we listen deeply with your daily invitation to share our talents with creativity. Strengthen and guide us so that we can be productive, effective, and decisive. May we generously serve our community as courageous leaders and compassionate neighbors. May we open our minds to discover new opportunities and boldly strive for life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Frank, would you call the roll? And there's a couple of people missing, so just it's in the record for whenever you do minutes.
Mr. Allison is not present. Uh, Mr. Mackey.
Here.
Mr. Pelisi.
Here.
Uh, Mrs. Katz is not present. Ms. Millie is not present. Mr. Byder.
Here.
Mr. Yoder.
Here, and we have a quorum of four. Um, item three, approval of city council meeting minutes from July 11th, 2024. Is there a motion in a second?
So moved.
Motion in a second. Any comments or questions on the meeting minutes? Hearing and seeing none, Mrs. Frank on the motion for item three.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Is Mrs. Katz on?
No.
Okay. Mr. Byder.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion passes four zero. Item four, limited courtesy of the floor. We've had no requests. Um, we will jump down to item six, Mrs. Frank.
Resolution to accept fiscal year 2022 City of Williamsport Bureau of Transportation audit reports.
Is there a motion in a second?
So moved.
Motion in a second. Um, Todd's on remotely. Um. I don't know if he's at a spot where he can chat. Um.
Hey, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you. Welcome.
All right, thank you. Good evening, uh, members of council, members of the administration. Um, this is the resolution to accept uh, the fiscal year 2022 financial statements for uh, the Williamsport Bureau of Transportation. Um, which during that time was Department of the City of Williamsport. This is essentially the last audit. Um, that'll be completed as the Bureau of Transportation, uh, the FY twenty-three. And moving forward will be uh, that of the River Valley Transit Authority. Um, I'm sorry, I couldn't attend the finance uh, committee meeting on Tuesday, but I know Tim Craft, who's also on, gave a presentation and at this point I'm going to turn it over to him to answer any particulars that are, that are questions that are still hanging out there in regards to the, the fiscal year twenty-two financial statements.
Uh, thanks, Todd. Um. You want to talk, uh, Mr. Byder about finance a little bit and then we can turn it over to Tim for any final questions?
Yep.
Um, Mr. Craft, if, if, if I may, the two things that stood out to me while we were in the finance meeting um, was our Act forty-four funding. Um, if you could just explain that to the full body of council, uh, and the public this evening and also um, the creative accounting is what I'll call it, uh, that you noticed, um, from some of the transactions that were listed.
Or absolutely. Um, can everybody hear me okay? First off?
Yes.
Okay, great. Um, I do have a PowerPoint. I don't need to go into that. If you want me to just direct, directly answer your questions, that's more than fine in the, in the sake of everyone's time. Um. So as a result of, of issues that are not new to this fiscal year's audit, we have issued um, a modified opinion. The, the primary reasons why we have this adverse opinion is, is it's a number of different things. The two biggest ones you hit on, and it just relates to the amount of Act forty-four funding, which is available to the authority. And the result, the, the issue that created this is that there were expenditures that were charged against Act forty-four historically. That were not, should not have been funded with that funding stream. So as a result, we're unable to determine and ultimately opine on the fact that we really have this set dollar amount at, of Act forty-four available for RVTA to utilize going forward. So with that said, I will say that there was nothing in the current fiscal audit that we identified that was uh, an impropriety or anything that was uh, suspicious to us within the current fiscal year. So that, that issue has carried forward, um, since we first did the audit and we just have not been able to obtain assurance to be able to opine cleanly on that balance. Likewise, you, you referenced, um, a couple of accounts that, that were called into question and we, we discussed at finance. The first is a revenue received in advance account. And that would be where any local funding would go into. Uh, that's traditionally referred to as your local share. With your Penn dot Act forty-four grant, you have a required amount that you have to receive from municipalities to support the Act forty-four operating grant. Um, the, the unique accounting that was done resulted in a, a series of entries that was sort of cumbersome, I'll say. So in other words, initially, the local share was billed to the city in the full amount. The city then paid, uh, the bureau for the amount of the local share. And then subsequently, the authority would then bill out to local municipalities for that amount, for the full local share amount, collect it. And then in theory reimburse the city to make the city whole for the portion that was in effect advanced. So the, the challenge that we have is that there's a series of entries that were hitting the, the revenue receiving advance accounts and likewise to do from the city account as that amount was billed out. And there were, there were a significant number of entries flowing through that activity. Um, it, it's, I, I oversimplified what we're seeing in the GL detail there as we go through and do our testing. So as a result, we have a balance of roughly a million dollars. That's revenue received in advance. But we also have a receivable from the city of a greater amount. And as we're going through and looking at the detail, we've been unable to obtain reasonable evidence and reasonable clarity on how much revenue really was received in advance because there isn't a million dollars sitting there in local that's been received in advance of when it's being expended. Um. And most simply put, every year you should be billing for a half million dollars, utilizing a half million dollars in local share and it, it should really be a wash. So um, as we're going forward, um, part of what we're engaged to do for RVTA is to make sure that we have a very clean starting point at seven one twenty-three. So with the help of, uh, Jennifer Stegelman, who's also on, we're going through all those balances of coming over and making sure that anything that comes through to the new authority on day one is clean and we have the ability to issue an unmodified opinion moving forward. So, uh, you know, in the balances that we're referring to, that the late, that drove this adverse opinion, we will be cleaned up and, and we'll have that information sorted out by the time that we issue the six thirty twenty, uh, three audit for RVTA.
The last thing, uh, that I would like the public and the full body of council to be aware of. If you could just explain, and I cannot remember the name of the document that was not signed by the individuals at RVT at the time. Because they were, by their attorney not to.
Yes, as a, as a part of the audit, we are required to obtain what's called a representation letter. It's a series of different repres- presentations from management just stating certify representation, certify things they're saying to us. And the inability to receive a signed representation letter under the auditing standards would represent a scope limitation. So the, the opinion was also modified to include that at the advisement of council, they did not sign the representation letter. Um, that was not unique to this period. That has been the case the past few audits as well, but that was also part of these, the adverse opinion and, and what was referenced in the audit report.
And to be clear, that's legal counsel, not city council.
Correct. Yes, that's correct.
Thank you. Okay. And the other, oh, Ms. Millie.
Welcome.
Thank you. Um, I actually just had one quick question on the note that there is an outstanding check to the City of Williamsport in the amount of nearly a hundred thousand dollars. That was outstanding since December of twenty nineteen?
Those were outstanding checks on the bank reconciliation. So on the bank reconciliation, we have the book balance and we have the bank balance. And there were checks that were written out of the account on the general led, general ledger of the authority and were never cashed. Um, so that was a series of different checks that just totaled up to that dollar amount. And as, as I referenced with the, the clean starting point, part of what we're doing is making sure that if there are old checks that are outstanding that need to be issued to the state or whatever the appropriate treatment is, we're rectifying that as we're moving forward. So it won't be an issue going forward.
Okay, so that is part of the clearing up of all accounts, which is to say, I think a lot of the questions that I asked on Tuesday, um, uh, related to the City of Williamsport's take on all of this because that is somewhat of greatest interest to me. But, um, uh, but, um, that ninety-eight thousand dollars, which presumably we, we received in some form at some other point will be audited and vetted and there will, in, in the final accounting between the city and RVTA. Correct?
Yes, that's correct. And just to be clear, that, that full ninety was not written to the city. It was various vendors or payees that were included in that total. But yes, that, that will be, that will be resolved as we go through.
Okay, wasn't written to the city? Wait, I'm confused. Sorry. It says there is a, to the city, but that's.
Yeah, there were, there were a number of different checks. I believe the biggest of which was to the city, but it's not that entire balance.
Okay, all right. Um, that were uncashed.
Yes.
Excellent. Um. Yeah, so I think, um. Um, I apologize. I don't actually know what you covered. So that, that's the only question that I really have moving forward. Um, uh, was to kind of clear that up. Um. Was going to say the only thing that we discussed related, you know, the, the city and RBT is, is dealing with some of the assets and that is part of the process of, of RBT becoming, having a, you know, a clean audit in the same way that it will be for us. So.
Yep.
Um, thank you very much.
Thank you both. Um. The other questions on this side here. Um, Todd, my only real question for you real quick, and then we can take a vote, I suppose. Um. So I mean, the, the, the couple of high level things that, um, RKL had kind of outlined is the kind of two big issues. Um, Todd, I take it, you know, seeing this now, I mean, you've been in, in place over there for over a year, I think. Um. I presume you're working with RKL to kind of clean up these processes, that kind of stuff to um, moving forward. Um, any, anything high level you can speak to in that regard, I think maybe would be a little helpful.
Um, yes, obviously we made changes in our finance department, kind of, uh, retweet things and, and personnel and um, obviously policy and procedure has been a, a hot topic, um, especially looking at how things were done in the past. Um, working with Jennifer, Tim and Ben, who's our new controller. Um, we are, you know, making sure that our, our, our eyes are dotted and our keys are crossed when it comes with the accounting and how our money's being handled. Um, obviously when we receive our local match, um, as far as our Act forty-four, i- it's utilized, um. You know, as it should be, it's not sitting there as any sort of, um, deferred revenue or however it was being handled in the past.
Gotcha. Um, I, I appreciate that and I, and I'll just make this final comment, you know, I, I think, um. You know, over the, over the past year, kind of working with you, Todd, um, I, I, I think we finally have the right people over there. Um, I don't know that we've had that for a while, um, predating, um. Todd here, and so I, I, I individually have confidence that, you know, as we see these things popping up in these, in the audits we have the past couple of years. Um, we have the right leadership in place over there. Well, I shouldn't say we, the authority has the appropriate leadership in place to actually get these things corrected and ensure that the authority is successful moving forward. Uh, and I'm glad to see that and I would commend the board. Um, and, uh, you Todd and your, your new team over there for, for making those actions and, and moving forward. This is good to see.
Thank you. It's, it's been a process.
Underst- understood. Any final comments or questions, Ms. Millie?
Um, just one quick question about passenger fares and where they've been since the pandemic, Todd, unrelated really to the, to the specific, um. To this specific budget year, but are we still significantly down in terms of passenger fares and, and ridership? Are we up? Do we trust?
Overall.
That we have?
W- we're probably sitting at about eighty, eighty-five percent of where we were pre-pandemic.
Okay, it seems to me that we used to have passenger fares listed at around a million dollars a year. Does that mean that we're up at about eight fifty at this point? Or does that mean that those numbers were potentially inflated?
It depends what you, there were things that were included that maybe should have been considered a route guarantee instead of passenger fares. Um, how revenue was classified. Um, obviously if it came in from like Penn College or um, Susquehanna Health System, obviously Susquehanna Health System would be, you know, considered passenger fares because they offer their employees, um. Free transportation and they foot the bill, whereas we run specific, a specific route for Penn College. Um, the shuttle over to the Earth Science Center. So the revenue that they give us would be considered a route guarantee.
Hmm.
So, um. Was it inflated? It, 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 in ways, yes, I would say, but, um, the revenue we have now, um. It, it's, and working with, um, you know, various entities, what's fixed route, what's, you know, what is passenger fare? What is route guarantee? Was service being done that was charter services opposed that what we was being included as fixed route service? Yeah, and we've been working to clean that up.
Okay, but you, you feel as though our ridership is back up to something close to what it was pre-pandemic anyway.
Uh, eighty, eighty-five percent.
Well, that's not bad. Really, I think it, it, um, has shocked me this year to the, the extent to which it seems as though the pandemic really did last for four years. I sort of thought it was over in twenty twenty-two, but I think things are still very much coming back. So.
It, it's, it's, it's still continuing to rise, but like in, in cases of like, uh, the whole programs that we used to transport people uh, on the fixed routes, that program never reopened and that's lost ridership that we never saw come back.
Hmm. And where did that go?
I don't, I don't think that the programs, some of them even restarted or if they did, um, that the numbers were there.
Uh, okay, sorry.
I, I don't know. I don't know the specifics.
Okay.
I just know from our.
I, I think maybe we have a lag. Thanks, thanks, Todd. Um, that's.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, uh, hearing and seeing none, Mrs. Frank on the vote for item six, please.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Ms. Millie.
Yes.
Mr. Byder.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion passes five zero. We'll jump down to item ten. We have a land development for Pennsylvania College of Technology. Um, is there a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second, motion in a second. For the record, I'll be abstaining when the vote. Um, as there, as Penn College is my employer. Mr. Nar, good evening, sir.
Good evening, President Yoder, Vice President Byder, members of council. What I bring before you is a land development request from Pennsylvania College of Technology. The current land use is a vacant lot. It is located within the Institutional Zoning District. The proposed plan is to construct a clean energy house and office building. Previously, council approved a three parcel lot consolidation at the corner of Park Street and Second Street for this future development. The proposed land development plan will be for a clean energy house of eight hundred and five square feet with ADA ramp. The office will be a five hundred and sixty-seven square foot building with the ADA paid parking. The plan was reviewed, was reviewed by the city engineer, Eric Smith-Gall, the Stormwater Authority. I do have consistency letters saying that they are in compliance with the storm water. The plan was reviewed by Lake County Planning as well as city planning. You do have Lake County Planning comments. Comments number one and two, the plans in front of you have been corrected. Comments for the Lake County Conservation District does have the ENS plan. We're just waiting on the final letter for that. Comments five, obviously was reviewed by both Bill Scott and Eric Smith-Gall. Comment six, we do have a will serve letter. Um, at this point in time, like I said, we do have representatives president, present. And, uh, the only thing that, uh, obviously once we, we will not issue any building permits until the ENS plan has been approved by the Conservation District and that's standard procedure. And I can answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Nar. Any comments or questions on the land development plan? I just have a curiosity question. Um, what is a clean energy house? If you could explain that for me?
Well, I might let Mr. Kaiser explain it. My understanding from what a clean energy house is, is obviously under the energy system and under the code, houses now are supposed to meet a certain level as far as energy rating. So this building was built so that the students who are now taking that type of courses will be able to see what, whether the, it meets the certain codes at different times as far as the energy likes.
So much like a commercial building has a LEED certified rating.
Yeah, it's correct.
Much, it's a.
And it'll be insulation, you know, insulation, you know, all of the, the R values, which is required under the Pennsylvania, uh, planning code.
Yeah, and, and I'll break my little rule here, I guess. I'm, I'm a little familiar with, uh, oh, well, I'm a little familiar with this as well. Um, so they'll be doing, um, predominantly residential weatherization training out of there. Um, which is a big part of what the Clean Energy Center, um, within the Workforce Development Office does there. There will be a part of it where there will be a staff person based out of there as well. Um, there will. There will be a part of it where there will be a staff person based out of there as well. Um, there will be some academic. Classes offered out of that as well. But uh. That's that's a bulk of what is. It'll be, it'll be a combination of academic and non-credit training out of there. Um, and and it will. It will, it will serve a a a niche that um, it it will expand on what they're already doing. Um, and there's a, there's a demand for it. Um, so it's really good that it's there and um. And will serve a a good need here immediately in the city, but and in the broader region too.
Good. It is to enhance the construction program that they have in there. It just basically adds to it.
You're welcome. Any other comments or questions? All right, uh, here you see none, Mrs. Frank on item eleven.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Bider.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Abstain. Motion passes four zero one. Uh, thank you, Mr. Nar. Okay, um, we will jump back up to item five. Mrs. Frank.
An ordinance to transfer ordinance number thirteen in final reading.
Is there a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second. Motion in a second. Uh, Mayor Slaughter is not here. He's at a conference, unfortunately, but I believe. Val Fessler is going to cover for him, so awesome. Welcome.
Thank you.
How are you?
Good. How are you?
Good. Um, this is second reading. Um, I think one of the things that we had talked about during first reading was seeing if there were other places other than. Reserves to pull the. Thirty-six, five, four, one. Um, but I'll turn the floor to the Val for any of that and anything else you need to add for second reading.
We did confirm with our HUD rep that we are not able to pay this back with federal funds. So there is not funding available within community and economic development for this repayment, so I would default to. You to select the source.
Jamie, anywhere in the general fund? I don't know about the rest of you. I would feel better with it coming from legislative contingency myself. Get the sense of that. Mr. Bider.
The only clarification that I would like, um, when we receive the money back. Does that money then? Go back to legislative contingency? No, it has to go directly back to the HUD fund.
Right.
Yeah, we will not get this money back, unfortunately.
Yeah, I mean, we will, but.
It will, it will stay in the city. It'll go to the city, but it will not get back to the general fund, unfortunately, yeah. All right, um.
Seventy-five, I believe.
Yep, yeah, as I said, I kind of jot a couple of notes down about what the amendment should look like. If you would be like me to take a stab at that. So there's seventy-five thousand in there. It would change to thirty-eight, four, five, nine. We, um, after taking thirty-six, five, four, one out, so we should just have to add another line and we should be okay. So I'll make a motion to amend the ordinance um, to create a. Um, additional line in section one, um, reading from legislative contingency. Um, account description, I guess, would be um, city count council legislative contingency. I don't know the account number. Jamie, you can dig that up and modify the ordinance um, after we pass it and I can sign that. Um, initial budget would read seventy-five thousand dollars, revised budget would read thirty-eight thousand, four hundred and fifty-nine dollars. With a change of negative thirty-six thousand, five hundred and forty-one dollars. Is there a second to that motion? We have a motion in a second. Any? Comments, discussion? I don't think there is. Uh, Mrs. Frank on the motion to amend.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Bider.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion to amend passes five zero. Back to the main motion. Any additional comments or questions on the main motion? All right, Mrs. Frank, so hearing seen none then on the main motion for item five, please.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Bider.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, uh, motion passes five zero. Uh, let's jump to item seven, Mrs. Frank. Thank you, Val.
Res- resolution application for PA DCED multi-mobile grant. For streetscape improvement project along Third Street, Center Street to Hebron Street and Elmire Street, Third Street to Fourth Street.
Is there a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second. Motion in a second. Mr. Scott, welcome, sir.
Good evening, Council President Yoder, members of council. Have a resolution to present for your consideration. This resolution requests a multimodal transportation grant fund in the amount of two million. Seven hundred eighty-eight thousand, two hundred thirty-six dollars and ninety-eight cents. Through the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development, the DCED. Uh, also through the CFA, the Commonwealth Financing Authority. Uh, this is for a streetscape on uh, West Third Street between Center Street. And Hepburn Street and also includes um, adjacent Elmire Street between Third and Fourth Street. The streetscape items um, generally include uh, new curb, sidewalk, brick pavers, street trees, street lights. Um, and rain gardens. It's a beautification project of that area is what it amounts to. Um, there's no match for this. We requested a waiver for that, and if we're successful getting the grant, um, there won't be a match. So that's, that's really good news. Um, this will probably be awarded towards the end of this year or possibly early next year. They will make their selections.
All right, um. I think this went to Public Works. Mr. Pelisi, wanna?
It did.
Fill us in on the conversation there?
I mean, Bill pretty much said it. It's. It's uh. Looking to clean it up, make everything look nice and presentable. It's been quite a few years, I think. So there's a lot of improvements needed. We're we're seeing some reinvestment down in the area by way of like Jackass Brewery. Farrington is purchasing more properties. This is just going to help to continue to do, to develop that area. I do have a question, though, regarding the resolution. Just uh, the very last section of resolution title. That it be resolved. Uh, da, 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 from the Commonwealth Financing Authority to be used for the. Do we have a project name yet for this, Bill?
Project name?
Does that make it? I mean, I don't think it makes a difference if we don't actually have a formal name for the project of this yet.
Street, streetscape.
I don't think that makes a big difference, does it? Austin, does that have any impact on the resolution? Oh, okay. Okay.
But it's, there's usually something related to the scope. I I mean, I guess there's, there's nothing in this resolution whatsoever to indicate. I mean, I know that there are supporting materials, which I would like to request a copy of. Uh, that, you know, that would indicate what those are, but it does, does seem like the resolution itself should link to those supporting materials. Do you understand what I'm saying? So that it should say. Yeah.
That'd be fine. I just didn't know if it had any bearing on the legal formality of the resolution.
I mean, even if it just said to be used for streetscape um, on Center Third and Elmira Streets or something like that, or Third Street, right?
I think adding, swapping out that language for where it says project name would make, would make sense.
Okay.
You want to make an amendment?
Yeah, I would. Make a motion to amend. Said. Project name to be titled Third Street. Third Street. Streetscape Project.
Streetscape.
Streetscape Project, Third Streets. What am I saying, Bill? What are we calling it?
West Third Street Streetscape.
There we go. West Third Street Streetscape Project. So I'm, I've got a piece of candy and it's making it even harder. I would make that.
Is there a second?
Second. I think.
Sneak it in there some way.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi.
Of course, yes, yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Bider.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion to amend passes five zero.
If I just wanted to follow up real quick, thank you for that, by the way, for, um. Like Mr. Scott said, there is no match needed for this, which is, it's great. Um, you know, we need the, the investment into our downtown is going to be. Any bit that we can get down there is great, so. Thank you.
Mr. Bider and then Ms. Mealy.
Um, I just want to take a minute to thank um, Bill, yourself and Val. Uh, this was the first introduction that I had to you both in this particular project um, in February. Councilman Pelisi and I had a meeting with uh, various local business owners. Uh, and their concern was specifically sidewalks. Uh, and we had a little bit bigger vision than that um, as a group here uh, between administration and council. And you were the one that uh, recommended the funding source, Val, and I really appreciate that. And Bill doing the majority of the legwork to make this happen, and then also uh, Mr. Livermore. Uh, for being a contact point, because this will be something that he ends up having to watch over. As it is uh, underway and then finally completed. Uh, so thank you to the three of you for um, picking this up and running with it.
And I'll second that. Um, Vince, Eric, thank you both for kind of spearheading this. This is a really good example of what happens when we have good visionary leadership at the top. And can get good collaboration between council and the administration. Um, doesn't happen as often as it should, but this is a great example of it happening and um, applaud you both. And our administration team. Ms. Mealy.
Um, yeah, I just wanted to. To mention again that if you could send me the supporting documentation, so I could look at that, that would be awesome. Um, and what did you say? So the scope is more than just sidewalks, but street trees, obviously. What other components?
Street lights.
District, I assume?
What's that?
Matching the ones in the historic district, I assume? Um, and this is going up both sides of Third Street between Center and Heffernan. And then heading up Elmira. I think that would be great. Um, and especially if we could get. Trees on the side of Elmira that currently is treeless. That would also be lovely. I, yeah, I think this is an excellent project and I um, uh, now that I understand what it is. Um, and I'm excited about it. I I would. Mention um, just in terms of. Well, that I would like to see us attempt perhaps at some point in the future to send um. Some of the grant love, if we can uh, into the historic district proper. Um, there are. It would be great to see some unified streetscape running down the historic district. Um, curbing especially is in really rough shape heading down that way. Um, and there are a lot of funds out there for historic um, upkeep and historic renovation. Um, it would be good to see us potentially take advantage of that. Um, the only reason I mention that is that there. It's an area of the city that much like these blocks that we're talking about. Um, will be, is already heavily traveled on foot by people visiting the city of Williamsport. And um, and while I generally speaking believe that sidewalks are the responsibility of the property owner. If they are not always, then we should perhaps look at the district as as a next location for for dealing with that. Um, I think, you know, that and potentially the city trying to look at a partnership with um, like a grant funded partnership with constituents. To improve sidewalks in low-income neighborhoods, I think would be huge, um, because we have just a lot of. Really rough streetscape in the city, and I mean rough, not just in the sense that it, that it doesn't look good, but in the sense that it's difficult to traverse. And and um, and it would be an improvement, I think, in the lives of our. Uh, handicapped citizens especially, but in the lives of everyone to have a, to have the the streetscape be a safer place. Um, so excellent work and. Now I just ask for more. Thank you. Um, but thanks, guys, very much for putting this together. This will be an awesome improvement.
Any other comments or questions? All right, hearing seen none, Mrs. Frank on item seven.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Bider.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion passes five zero. We'll jump to item eight.
Resolution to award Brick Design Group professional engineering services for the Newberry Project.
Sir, a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second. Motion in a second, Mr. Scott.
Yes, good evening again, Council President Yoder, members of council. Have another resolution to present for your consideration. This resolution authorizes the award of professional uh, landscape architect services to Bricks Design Group. Uh, Bricks, as you're probably aware of, is a local firm based on East Third Street here in the city. Um, they're already working for us on the Own Park Project. Uh, this will be for engineering services to construct improvements at Newberry Park. Uh, those improvements will include more pickleball courts. Uh, a soccer field, probably a um, U twelve, U ten type size of a field. ADA parking spaces and a walking path around the perimeter. Uh, also includes some amenities such as tractors. Receptibles and benches. Uh, task one, cost will include uh, survey, design, specifications, meetings and bidding. For the amount of thirty-five thousand, nine, nine hundred ninety dollars. Task two is construction supervision for a fee of three thousand, five hundred and ten dollars. And finally, this gives a total lump sum not to exceed figure of thirty-nine thousand, five hundred dollars.
All right. Um, thank you, Mr. Scott. Anything to add from Public Works, Mr. Pelisi?
No, I will just state that uh, Councilwoman Katz isn't able to be here, but during that meeting, she did. Want to cite just um, for the services that we're getting versus what we're paying, how believably. Uh, affordable she thought that that this was. So she's really looking forward to seeing what's coming out here, I think, as we all are.
Yeah, I would agree.
I would agree.
Any other comments or questions for members, Ms. Mealy?
Um, once again, I don't have any supporting documentation for this, or is it further down in the drop box and I just missed it? That sometimes happens.
Don't.
If you could, if you could also email that to us, the contract with Bricks, that would be helpful. The old hard copy.
Old school.
Thank you. Um, anyway, we we know the general scope of the project, but. I was just kind of uh. Excited to check it out. Are we, so we are adding parking spaces as in paved area to the park?
Yeah, yeah, that's ADA improvements. You have to have a paved uh, van, van accessible. Parking space.
Okay. Um, but just one parking space?
At least one.
Okay, I guess we'll see when the designs finish. But uh. Yeah, that's, that's just me hoping that we're not paving more of our park area than we have to.
No.
All right, um, and so this is an all-in cost. It includes construction supervision, construction management.
Yes.
Um, does that take it more or less off your plate bill, or are you still involved in the?
I will certainly be involved, uh, but I want, they will um, handle the uh, day-to-day inspection.
Got it, great.
But pay apps and things like that will still come to me for final approval.
Yeah. Um, I guess I just meant right, that then, that that means that you can be to a certain extent, just getting updates and things like that on the project, which is awesome. All right, great. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Mr. Mackey. What's the uh, timeframe on this project again?
So um, we award tonight. They'll start work pretty soon. It'll be a quite more traditional fall design with the. Designed done this fall and then a winter bidding schedule. With a spring, uh, you know, spring, late spring construction start. It'll be built next year.
Okay. Any other questions? Ms. Mealy.
Uh, one last question. The the soccer field is, has a designated user or an expected, expected user group, or is just kind of a? Just going in.
I wasn't privy to that conversation. I'm not sure who uh. Scott, do you have any information on that? The soccer, who might be using it?
Okay, all right, well, maybe we should. I I'm just asking, cause. Historically speaking, when we have fields that don't have something that's, you know, someone who's a designated user, they they tend to fall apart pretty quickly. Um, so maybe we could. Before we begin the design phase. Before we begin the design phase, look into whether or not that user base is a reality. And if we, you know, if that doesn't turn out to be the case, maybe we should try to. Make it more of a general all around field or something like that that could be used for a couple of different sports, so that we're not locking ourselves into one specific use or another. Um, you know what I mean?
Bill, Scott, whenever Derek gets back from whatever conference he's at, can you check in with him? Get some of those details, send it out to us. Um, and then, you know, if based on what Liz is saying here, you know, if we need to pivot. Just outline what that looks like for us.
Sure.
I mean, like, I was a soccer player. I'm a big fan of soccer fields. I would like to see that be a part of be a part of this. I'm just saying that, um. I mean, we know that we have a lot of kids who who will use a field for a lot of different things. So to lock us into one specific use, if if there's not a specific user, that strikes me as a mistake. So. Okay, thanks, guys.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
God. I I mean, is the is the idea that the soccer goals will be permanent or will they be moved? I mean, we're just talking about. Two, two soccer goals and some grass. I mean, I'm assuming the lines will be painted on at the time before the game's played. So. I mean, I feel like. You can, when the, when it's not being used for soccer, you can use it for whatever you want.
Yeah, absolutely. It's a pretty wide open, flat space there, relatively flat. It won't take much regressing if at any. Um, maybe a tree might be in the way. Chris is going to look at a couple of different layouts. Might be possible there. So.
Yeah, well, it would be nice to.
Yeah.
To 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 see us be able to retain like shade and things like that too, for even if it's an amenity. It it would be great to see games being played down there. I'm just kind of trying to. Uh, understand the kind of the planned use of the space. Um, thanks.
Any other comments or questions? Here you see none, Mrs. Frank on item eight, please.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Byder.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion passes five zero. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Uh, we'll move to item nine, Mrs. Frank.
Resolution authorizing agreement between the Williamsburg Bureau of Police and the Pennsylvania State Police.
Is there a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second, Assistant Chief Bolt. Good evening, sir, and welcome.
Good evening. Council President Yoder, members of council. Um, this is simply a resolution authorizing an agreement between Williamsburg Bureau of Police and Pennsylvania State Police. We have several upcoming, uh, events, which historically, state police have always provided us assistance in dealing with those events. One of which would be, uh, Williamsport, um, correction, the Grand Slam Parade, the other would be the MLB game. So. Even though this is kind of a formality, they just, uh, in recent years would like to have that agreement in writing. Uh, through, uh, Harrisburg. So there's no money or, uh, that's exchanged. This is just an agreement indicating their roles and the assistance that they would offer for our events. And I'll open up to any questions you guys may have.
Um, this did not go to committee. But any comments or questions for Assistant Chief Bolt or Chief Snyder?
Just one comment.
Yes, Mr. Pulizzi.
Uh, cause I even actually highlighted it right here. Provide additional services. At no additional cost to the city of Williamsport.
That is correct. Yeah. Um, but I'll. Sorry, I also wanted to add that this was reviewed by us. By our solicitor.
No, I I just want to say I. Appreciate seeing that 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 service provided by the state police to us, especially at no additional cost. So. That's all I'm saying.
Absolutely.
Mm hmm.
Any other comments or questions? Okay. Here you see none, Mrs. Frank on item nine, please.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Byder.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion passes five zero. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Uh, we'll move to item ten or item eleven, excuse me, certificate if it's appropriate from Harb. Um, we have three. Um, one at eight seventeen West Third Street, Herdickville Properties, one at nine hundred West Third Street, T L C. Um, and seven forty one West Fourth Street, Boomtown Rental. Um, is there a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
All right, um, these are in Dropbox. I will be the first to tell you that I really don't know much about them aside from what's in front of us. Um. But any, any comments or questions on anything in there? Likely which I won't be able to answer, uh, Ms. Mealy.
Uh, we presume I did not, um, check in with the hardboard that these were all approved, correct?
I presume they were all approved. Yep.
Mm hmm. Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
There you go.
Okay.
Here you can see no others, Mrs. Frank on item eleven.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Byder.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion passes five zero. Uh, we'll move to item twelve, except for filing finance committee meeting minutes from January thirtieth, two thousand twenty four. Public safety meeting minutes from June twenty fourth and July, um, ninth, two thousand twenty four. Water sanitary authority meeting minutes from June twenty sixth, two thousand twenty four, and public works from February twenty seventh, two thousand twenty four. Is there a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second. Motion in a second. Any comments or questions on the minutes? Here you can see none, Mrs. Frank on item twelve.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Byder.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion passes five zero. Item thirteen announcements, our next meeting will be in a month, Thursday, September twenty fifth. Um, seven P M. Right here in train change to two. We are having a little bit of a break for a little league. As we always do. September fifth, what did I say? Twenty fifth, sorry. It's okay.
Just a little bit of a break.
Just a little late, my bad. September fifth, just to set the record straight. Uh, I tried, just kidding. Um. Upcoming meetings, Thursday, August fifteenth, ten thirty A M zoning hearing board, Tuesday, August twentieth, six thirty P M is Harb. Wednesday, August twenty first, ten A M Bladed Property. Wednesday, August twenty eighth, eleven thirty A M redevelopment authority. Um, City Hall will be closed on Monday, September second for the Labor Day holiday. Um, Tuesday, September third, eleven thirty A M Public Safety, one P M Finance, two thirty P M Public Works, Wednesday, September fourth, nine A M Economic Revitalization. And Thursday, September twenty or September fifth, did it again. There you go. I caught myself, um, city council meeting. Um, any comments from members of council?
Oh, I do. You do, Mr. Byder?
Um, yesterday morning at nine A M here in this, uh, building, we had our, uh, economic revitalization committee meeting, which was an update from the Architects B K V. Uh, who we have hired to do our definitive study on the City Hall building on Fourth Street. And I just wanted to share a little bit about those findings. Uh, it was a very thorough meeting for those of you that were in attendance. Uh, I appreciate you being there. Uh, for those that were not, um, the biggest thing as far as takeaway is to be concerned. Was the square footage of the facility. That study has been done. And the required square footage for the various departments that are currently housed within various buildings around the city proper. So the building itself is around thirty five thousand square feet. Um, without the basement, it's about seventeen thousand square feet. The structure, uh, according to B K V is in great condition. Um, the biggest concern that they have is the roof. There are some. Spots where the there's some copper missing and some shingles that are going to need to be replaced, but other than that, they saw no other. Major issues, um. With the structure, the mechanical systems, uh, telecommunications, air conditioning, things like that are not good at all. And they recommend that every single one of those be replaced, uh, along with bathrooms. But again, all stuff that we were relatively aware of, but getting, um, solid confirmation on. At this point, there were some very nice graphics that they had, um, in those buildings, they had those, the walls in a very dark red color, a solid red color that denoted historic. Uh, preservation pieces for us to consider, should we stay in that building and have to go through a redesign?
Hmm.
Not as much as of the building and the layout that you would assume.
Hmm.
Was of that historic nature. Uh, the stairwells were however, of that, and then the main lobby, when you were to walk in the, uh. Fourth Street entrance, you would see, uh, where Nick Grimes was located at one point as a tax collector. Uh, that particular hallway foyer was listed as that, and most of the foyers in the second floor and third floor, as well as the community room. And the council chambers, um, the secular room. Uh, those were all considered to be of historic nature, uh, that would have very limited ability to be modified.
Hmm.
Uh, without the approval of the National Park Services. Um, accessibility, as has been noted several times, is going to be an issue. Uh, the number one thing that they talked about was the elevator shaft and the main entrance with the ramp. Uh, and then having access to the basement as well. The elevator shaft would have to be widened and or deepened to accommodate. Uh, current ADA requirements. Now, when you, we got down to the study of the required space for current departments, one, um. I will say. Surprise that B K V had. Was the required space that each of the department heads felt they needed. Uh, after the interviews, he had felt that it was a little bit small, um, which he recommend, which he, um. Recommended a little bit larger space, but then also recommended. Bigger conference rooms, uh, because of the administration's current need, they don't feel like they need big conference rooms it within their offices themselves. They can go ahead and just grab a conference room real quick when they need to have those meetings. So. It's nice to see that nobody in the administration is hiding out in their office. So they're out doing the work, which we appreciate. Um, the ironic thing throughout the entire, um, study and presentation though. Was that the building itself, as I mentioned, was around thirty five, thirty six thousand square feet, give or take a few hundred square feet. And if we were to put. All of the offices in there minus the police department. Not police administration, we would require twenty four thousand square foot of space. If we were to put police inside. That number just so happens to reach thirty six thousand square feet. So a bit ironic that it came out to that, uh, exact square footage of what we have currently available to us and what would be required. Um, but there is a lot more that has to go into that particular study. And we're looking forward to the next step, which will be held at another E R C meeting sometime in September when they get to that point. So we will have another update at that time.
Yeah. Uh, uh, Mr. By, I appreciate that very much. Um. I I I have not had a chance to go back and watch the playback and I will probably this weekend, but, um. Very insightful. I continue to be excited about this process, um, because. Aside from knowing a lot of what we know through that, I mean, nothing really surprising there. Um, that next step is costs, right? So we can actually get a good quantifiable.
Correct.
Um. Data set that we all can work off of, um, and whatever. Action we go with here, we will have the data to take that next step that we haven't been able to do, which is actually, um, put something into action. Whether it's. That, um, City Hall, whether it's at a different site that we would need to procure, whether it's building, um, whether it's, you know, the. Museum where the police are at now, a different site for the for the police, whatever it may be. Um, so I'm excited about the progress they're making. Um. And I'm excited to see what our final findings and data points look like, so we can, um. Find some consensus and 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 get a a a new home regardless of it's a. Structure we own now or one we don't. So, Ms. Mealy.
Um, yeah, I'm excited because I think. Uh, of the various studies that I've already participated in on on City Hall, um. B K V has already completed all of the work that we ever completed in a pursuit of a study.
Yep.
That is to say that the fact that this is merely the first step in a much longer series of steps that will yield us a better answer is exciting to me because it makes me feel as though we're. We are getting somewhere and I also, um. That, you know, um, their estimation in many ways echoes. The reports we've had throughout the years about big chunks of the building, you know, the fact, yes, we know the HVAC shot. We know telecommunications are, you know, have changed even since we moved from the building. So anyway. Um, it's, uh, it's it's great to see it happening quickly and to see it more or less echoing previous findings that we've had. Um, so that's. Good to know there's some concurrence.
Um, thank you again for that.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Um, any other, Mr. Mackey? Yeah, Eric, sorry. You were throwing around a lot of square footage numbers.
Right, right.
You said the entire building, including the basement.
Was thirty six thousand.
Thirty six thousand. So when you say the basement, you mean that's where where codes was? No, or underneath like.
That's where codes was, I believe. Police had a, uh, workout room down there, some other things like that.
Okay, so if you don't count. If you don't count the basement, you said it was the whole building was seventeen thousand?
No, excuse, the basement was seventeen.
Oh.
Um, okay, so taking that out.
All buildings twenty, no, nineteen.
Correct, nineteen. Nineteen is what. We have in that building minus the basement. So first floor, second floor, third floor. Is nineteen thousand square feet.
Nineteen thousand.
Yes.
First floor, second floor, third floor. And they said after interviewing everybody that works in City Hall. We would need seventeen thousand square feet?
No, they said twenty four thousand.
So we're actually short?
We are, we are.
Way short. If. Or what the people who work there say they need.
Correct. And a big, a big portion of that, which I didn't want to get into too much of the detail, but I'm happy to, um. Is going to be storage that's required. So. One of the folks that was pointed out specifically was our city clerk. Um, she requires a lot of storage for city records, things like that, and that did not have an exact square footage. In the presentation that they gave us, but there is a number there, uh, on the slide deck, which I do not have a copy of, but we can get from B K V. To take a look at that specifically. Uh, and then obviously, if police administration is going to be there, police administration is going to require a little bit more storage space as well. Because they're also at that point, including evidence. Within that storage.
And what was the total if if the police come, that just the administration comes back?
If just, if just the administration comes back, B K V was recommending. About twenty four thousand square foot of space.
Okay, all right.
But no, I think what John was asking is if just the police administration comes back.
Yeah, that's correct.
With the twenty.
That keeps it at twenty four.
Yep. If the police themselves, patrol officers and things like that were to.
Right.
Join us in the building, we would require the the whole space.
Right. But either way, obviously, one could anticipate at least storage being acceptably put in the basement.
That's correct.
Yeah. And as far as all the, uh. ADA requirements and, you know, the study that was done. A couple of years ago. They're not concerned about really any of that, except for. The elevator. They don't, they don't feel that the the bathrooms will need major.
They they did. Bathrooms were one of the biggest things they talked about with ADA requirements, um, a complete overhaul on every single bathroom. That we have that would be accessible to the public. Um, they also talked about doorknobs that are inside the building. And where the public would actually have access to, and also should an employee need to have a particular ADA doorknob for their office. Uh, but they also recommended that there are. Because of the nature of the building itself and where it sits in the historic. Uh, corridor. There are some exceptions that the National Park Services will make to that. I'm not saying that we're going to make those exceptions or anything, but that was the very tip of the iceberg. Um, and they did not get into anything more about ADA compliance.
Okay.
So I assume that's going to be coming in our next meeting with them.
Yeah, and I apologize for.
No.
Being there. My, my new job's keeping me way busier than I thought it was going to, but, okay, now this is all really good info.
Yeah.
Um, thank you all.
Absolutely.
Any other? Oh, Mr. Mackey?
Yeah, just real quick.
Go ahead.
Um, just a preemptive thank you to all of the work that our. Chief of Police Assistant Chief Sam. P M S. Is doing in preparation for, uh, Little League. I mean, I don't think I have to tell anyone. The next couple of weeks is going to be pretty hectic.
Yep.
So please be patient. I know, Chief, you can probably speak to this a little bit better than I can, you know. Especially Tuesday. You know, with the parade. It to see something, say something, right, Chief? I mean, if if you see anything that looks suspicious. Call nine one one. Um. But again, it's going to be a long day. It's going to be a great day like it always is. I'm confident of that. So just. Thank you for all the work that you folks are doing behind the scenes. Um, and. I hope that, uh. We all have a great series again this year. I know it'll be good. The Yankees are coming to town. That'll be, uh. Go Phillies, but.
All right, somebody turn his mic off.
Yeah, anyway, that's it. Yeah, just, uh. It's Little League season and I'm just asking everybody in in town to. Put on their patience, as we say.
Yep.
To the kids. So thanks, that's it.
I would second.
I would second all of that minus the Phillies. So with all due respect. Um, any other comments or questions for members of council? Or any, any comments from the administration? Any comments from the public? Okay. Uh, motion and a second for adjournment.
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
Motion or meaning adjourned. Thank you. Have a great, safe August.